Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is Monday, October 28, 2024. This is the Wareham Fall Town Meeting, and I note the time is 7:00 PM. Madam Town Clerk, can you confirm that the warrant for this meeting has been duly posted and noticed?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Just a couple of housekeeping things before we get started. I just want to point out where the emergency exits are. So in the back, up to the right of where the TV booth is, that's one exit. There's an exit over here to my right, and then there's the exit that you came in if you go out this way. Those are all exits directly to the outside, just for your information, in case anything does happen. At this time, I'd like you to stand, if you would please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As has always been the case, this town meeting shall be governed by Massachusetts general laws, our bylaws and rules, Robert's Rules of Order and town meeting time, to the extent that they conform to the conditions of the town and my rulings. Just for your information, the section immediately here to my left in the front is where non-voters would be seated, so if you're a non-voter and you're not a department head, if you could sit in this section right down here. It makes it difficult to count if voters are sitting in the non-voter section. Yes, you may be seated. So I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce some of the people on the stage, or all of the people on the stage with me. The town clerk and her assistant are here, and Deputy Moderator Claire Smith. To my right, Town Council Richard Bowen, the Town Administrator Derek Sullivan. I'm going to ask that the Chairs of the Select Board and the Finance Committee introduce themselves and their respective committees.
Thank you. Judith Whiteside. To my right is Jared Chadwick. To his right is Ron Bessie. To his right is Sherri Quirk, and to her right is Sarah Corbett. Thank you.
I'm Norma Scoggan, Chair of the Finance Committee. I have Heidi Churchill, Brianna King, Andrea Vicarelli, Alan Slaven, Jerry Stefanski, and Jody Smith.
Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to recognize the Chair of the Select Board for recognition for Representative Susan Williams Gifford, who has recently passed on.
Thank you. State Representative Susan Williams Gifford dedicated herself with unparalleled commitment, integrity, and passion to the service of her constituents in the 2nd Plymouth District of Massachusetts for more than two decades. Throughout her distinguished tenure, Representative Gifford demonstrated unwavering dedication to advancing the needs and aspirations of her communities, tirelessly working to improve the quality of life for all of her constituents. Her advocacy led to significant advancements in education, healthcare, and infrastructure, reflecting her profound understanding of the challenges faced by her district and her resolute efforts to address them. Her leadership was notable for her ability to foster bipartisan collaboration, champion vital legislation, and address critical issues with a thoughtful and compassionate approach. The legacy of her work will continue to resonate within the 2nd Plymouth District and beyond, leaving an indelible mark on the communities she proudly served. May we have a moment of silence for her?
And I believe Mr. Slaven wanted to be recognized? No? Yes? No?
Sorry. I just wanted to stand in recognition of what Susan had done for him. Thank you.
So as I'm required to do, I am going to do the roll call vote of the departments. Bear with me a second. Accounting. Administration. Cemetery. Council on Aging. Board of Health. Municipal Maintenance. Natural Resources, Animal Control, and Harbor Master. Police. School Department. Emergency Medical Services. Town Clerk. Treasurer Collector. Inspection Services. Library. Sewer. And Veterans Agent. And Zoning Planning. Thank you. So by tradition, at least the tradition since I've been coming here, the debate will be limited to five minutes for the petitioner to speak and two minutes for each subsequent speaker. When you do get up to speak, please state your name before you begin speaking, and I would ask that we continue to treat other voters and any of the guest speakers with respect and courtesy such that you would expect for yourself. We are here to debate the issues before the meeting and not to personally attack each other, and we want to show Wareham in its best light, which I know that we can do. So we will start with the Consent Agenda, and just so you understand, the Consent Agenda is a number of articles that get voted all as one vote, basically. Typically, these are articles which we expect will not be controversial. So is there someone to make a motion on the Consent Agenda?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town pass over Article III Prior Year Bills and Deficits. Approve Article IV PEG Access Receipts Reserved for Appropriation by transferring the sum of $286,836.93 from PEG Access Receipts Reserved for Appropriation to Wareham Community Television. Pass over Article 18 Seasonal Community Designation, and refer Article 19 Amendment to zoning bylaws to the Planning Board for further study.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded on the Consent Agenda. What I'm going to do is I'm going to go through each of the articles on the Consent Agenda, and if there was anyone that wishes any of these articles to be taken up separately, please call out "hold," and we will take them off the Consent Agenda. Article III Prior Year Bills and Deficits. Article IV PEG Access Receipts Reserved for Appropriation by transferring the sum of $286,836.93 from PEG Access Receipts Reserved for Appropriation to Wareham Community Television. Article 18 Seasonal Community Designation. Article 19 Amendment to zoning bylaws to the Planning Board for further study. Hearing no one calling out for a "hold," we'll proceed to vote on the Consent Agenda. All in favor of the motion on the Consent Agenda, please signify by stating "aye."
Aye.
Are there any opposed? It passes unanimously on a voice vote. We have a lottery system here, so I'll be turning each time to the town clerk to find out which is the next article we'll be taking up. Is there a motion on Article V?
Article V, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $52,150 from the Harbor Service Permits Receipts Reserved for Appropriations Account to the Harbor Master's Maintenance and Improvements Account or to take any other action thereto.
I move that the town approve as printed in the warrant. Can I do that?
Well, Mr. Slaven, would you withdraw your motion so we can do that? It's the same thing that you read.
Yes. I'll read the explanation. This will take a little time. Vessel dockage.
We need to... The motion on the floor, if you withdraw your previous motion, would be the Chair of the Select Board's motion that the town approve as Article V is printed in the warrant. Are you willing to agree to that?
I have no problem with it. I just want to make sure that everybody knows what they're voting for.
Okay, we can get to the explanation in a moment. I want to do a motion in a second, and then we'll hear the explanation on that. Is there a second on the motion that the town approve Article V as printed in the warrant?
Second.
Motion made and seconded on Article V. May I have the report of the Finance Committee on Article V?
The Finance Committee recommendation, this article is a housekeeping transfer from Harbor Service Permits Receipts. It will pay for the year-round dockage necessary for the Harbor Master and to keep vessels available for dispatch. It will also pay for software repairs, maintenance, and outfitting of Harbor Master facilities and equipment needed to keep the public safe. It should be approved.
Is there a report and recommendation of the Select Board?
Before 00 in favor.
Before 00 in favor. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on Article V? Seeing no one standing, we'll go to vote on Article V. All those in favor of the motion as appears on the screen on Article V, please signify by stating "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating "nay." Article V passes unanimously on a voice vote. Is there a motion on Article 12?
Madam Moderator, I move to approve Article 12 as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Article 12 to approve as printed in the warrant. May I have the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends favorable action 700.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action 400.
Are there any reports to be heard under this article?
Madam Moderator, may I correct? The vote was 601. There was an abstention on this one for the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Seeing no one standing that wishes to make a report, we'll go to vote. All those in favor, please signify by stating "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed, state "nay." It passes unanimously on a voice vote.
I thought there was someone from the Bylaw Review Committee that was supposed to be doing a...
They do have a report.
They were given an update. I just don't know where they are.
I don't know where they are either. I thought they were giving a report also.
I understand a report was going to be given.
Good evening.
And if you could state your name and give your report for the Bylaw Review Committee?
Sure, of course. My name is Julie Moran. I'm the Chair of the Town Bylaw Review Committee. Our committee has begun the process of reviewing all of the bylaws against the charter, interviewing many of our department heads relative to existing bylaws, and we are in the process of refining, amending, looking at the bylaws relative to coverage under Massachusetts laws and whether those should be retained or amended, and we look forward to presenting our final proposed amendments to the bylaws at the Spring Town Meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Moran. Seeing no one else standing to give a report, we'll proceed to the next article. Article 17.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund or any other monies available in the Community Preservation Fund under the category of open space/recreation, the sum of $750,000 to fund the rebuilding of Lopes Playground and the developing of a perimeter recreation project at Lopes Playground/Lopes Field, which property is dedicated to recreational purposes under MGL Chapter 45, Section 5, and further too, authorizes the Select Board to file on behalf of the Town of Wareham any and all grants deemed necessary under the Urban Self-Help Act 301 CMR 5.0, and the Town of Wareham be authorized to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary on behalf of the town to effect said project.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded on Article 17. May I have the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends favorable action 700.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action 400.
And I understand that the Chair of the CPC would like to be recognized.
Patrick Lester, Precinct 1, Chair of the Community Preservation. This application was submitted by the town, and I would recommend that they be given appropriate time, 15 minutes or more, to discuss the application.
That who be given appropriate time?
The Town of Wareham, since this is a playground, and they are the applicant.
Is there anything further to be said on Article 17?
Yes, ma'am.
Please, Ms. Whiteside.
Thank you. Originally acquired in 1956 for recreation, Lopes Playground underwent a major facelift in 1983 after the community of Wareham spent two years planning and raising money to build the magnificent Robert Leather's wooden structure, the Dragon. More than 1,000 people worked during the course of a week to build this well-loved playground, portions of which still stand today. I was one of those people, as were many of you. Tonight, we have the opportunity to fund the complete refurbishment of this community playground, a playground at the gateway to Onset Village. But why should we? This playground, because of its location, is the most used playground in town. It is central to our largest village, where the population more than doubles in the summer months. It is not just a neighborhood playground, it is a community amenity. And why are playgrounds important? They are safe places where children and their families can gather to play, get exercise, have fun, and socialize. The main structure of the playground has deteriorated over 40 years, and large portions have been removed due to safety issues. The structure is not ADA compliant, although some individual freestanding pieces have been added over the years that are. The playground is used year-round, particularly by families with children and grandchildren. Families have birthday parties in the gazebo and enjoy the swings or the teeter totter. There are always pickup basketball games and even some baseball activities in front of the backstop, and when you've had enough of games, or swinging, or shooting hoops, where can you go? To the beach, of course, a short walk. This playground has always had the full support of the community. Over the years, the town has provided money for safety matting, and local businesses and groups have provided over $145,000 in goods and services. The crummy fence around the portion of the playground was recently replaced with engraved pickets, a fundraising activity which demonstrated how important the playground is to our families and community members. Did you buy a picket? I bought a couple. This project will ensure that Lopes Playground and Park will be totally ADA compliant, the only playground in Wareham to be so. It will have specific areas that are appropriate for ages 2 to 5, ages 5 to 12, as well as general use areas. It will have ADA-compliant ground covering and matting. The need to rebuild this community playground is mentioned in four documents: in the Playground and Open Space Assessment and Recreation Plan, published in 2014; in the Town's Open Space and Recreational Plan, approved by the town in 2018; in the Onset Village Slum and Blight Inventory of 2018, as well as an audit of accessibility within town facilities completed in 2019. There are two parts to this project: $650,000 for the current Lopes Playground and another $100,000 for a fully accessible perimeter path and improvements to the basketball courts. Depending on current prices, there will be approximately $500,000 of playground equipment, including the safety ground services. Approximately $150,000 is estimated for shipping, professional installation of the entire facility, and the engineering and permitting for the 4.4-acre parcel. There are two Massachusetts companies who have worked closely with the town to provide guestimates for us, for the equipment: Burke of Marshfield and Ulti of Blackstone. Traveled to Middleborough to see the recently completed Ulti Playground there. $100,000 will be used to create a perimeter pathway, improve the small parking area, as well as refurbish the two basketball courts. The town will be fully reimbursed, this $100,000, from a park grant from the state once the project has been completed. This is the first time the town has been awarded a park grant, a very competitive grant. PARC stands for Parkland Acquisition and Renovations for Communities. Such exciting news for this town. Won't you join the Community Preservation Committee, the Finance Committee, and the Select Board, who unanimously and wholeheartedly support this community improvement project? Thank you.
Thank you. Is anything further to be heard on Article 17? Seeing no one standing, we will go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 17, please signify by stating "aye." All those opposed, please signify by stating "nay." It passes unanimously by a voice vote. Article 8.
I move that the town vote to discontinue (A) the portion of 11th Street from Wareham Avenue to East Central Avenue, and (B) the portion of Elm Street from the end of the parking lot of the former Old Company Store located at 5 Elm Street to Swan Lane.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on Article 8. May I have the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee, please?
Finance Committee vote 700 to recommend.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action 400.
Is there anything further to be said on Article 8? Seeing no one standing, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 8, please signify by stating "aye." Any opposed, please signify by stating "nay." It passes by a majority on a voice vote. Article 6.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of $120,000 from the Receipts Reserved for Appropriation Onset Pier Account to fund the parking program in Onset Projects.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on Article 6. May I have the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends favorable action 601.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action 400.
Is anything further to be said on the motion on Article 6?
Thank you. These funds will be used to pay for next year's parking program in Onset, as well as some of the Onset-related projects. There's currently $639,769 in the account, so that leaves us just under $520,000 in the account, which sounds like a lot of money till we realize the pier's in desperate need of rehab for about $10 to $12 million, so that's why we're not trying to spend this down all the way. Thank you.
Is anything further to be said on Article 6, the fund parking program? Yes, ma'am.
Lisa Simmons, 6th Ave., I don't know what district it is. I just am curious, what are the projects in Onset that these funds are going to be used for, other than the pier? It's kind of unclear.
Okay, yeah, so you use them for signage if we're trying to repair anything in around the area, like the pickleball courts were done with these funds, basketball courts, so you want to have those funds set aside for a few of the different projects. Sometimes you're using it for engineering for any of those projects, so you can then bring something to town meeting and actually have a plan for it.
So it's only Onset, it's not being used for anything other than Onset?
Correct.
Okay.
Is anything further to be said on Article 6? Seeing no one outstanding to be heard, we'll go to a vote on Article 6. All those in favor of the motion under Article 6, please signify by stating "aye." Any opposed, please signify by stating "nay." It passes by a majority, voice vote. Article 16.
Article 16. Article sixteen, Damian's Food Pantry, Community Garden. I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve Fund, or any other available monies in the Community Preservation Fund, under the category of open space recreation, for a grant to the family pantry Damian's Place Corporation, the sum of thirty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars, to create twenty garden beds, install an irrigation line, and erect a fence around the entire community garden area on the property located at two forty-two Marion Road, Wareham.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded on Article sixteen, Damian's Food Pantry, Community Garden. May I have the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends favorable action six zero one.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action four zero zero.
Is there anything further to be said on the motion under Article sixteen? Seeing no one else standing, oh, I'm sorry. Yes?
Brenda Exstrom, Precinct Two. Will there be a deed restriction required on this land, seeing we're using community preservation funds?
Is there, I'm sorry, I interrupted you, go ahead.
And if so, who will be holding the restriction?
So is there anyone that wishes to answer Mrs. Exstrom's question?
Sandy Slaven, Precinct Three, CPC Treasurer, uh, uh, sorry. It will not be required because we are not purchasing any land. We would need a conservation restriction if land was purchased, and that's not the case here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, please identify yourself.
Yeah, Liz Wiley, I think I'm Precinct Six. And Wareham resident, and on the board of Damian's Food Pantry, I just wanted to speak on behalf of this project. This is an important project for completing. The Damians, I know many of you have seen the new building go up, and if you've gone by it, you've seen the gardens that have already been erected, and they're lovely, and they were well-used and cared for this summer. And the importance of getting that irrigation line in and finishing this with the twenty garden beds is really important for the completion of the Damian's project. There's a lot of families in that immediate area that have taken advantage of this. Within just a couple of weeks, the thirty-three garden beds that did get, you know, used this past summer were taken advantage of very quickly, so bringing another twenty garden beds on is going to be important for the community that we're trying to serve, to continue to get healthy local food to them. So just wanted to make that plea. Thank you.
Gentlemen, behind you.
Good evening, Francis Gay, Eleven Maritime Drive, Precinct Three, also on the Damian's Food Pantry Board, and just here to speak in favor of the project. As Liz said, the first round of beds that we have built, they're all already been used. And I think that this second round of using CPA funds would be a good investment for the town to incorporate. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on the motion on Article sixteen? Seeing no one else standing, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article sixteen, please signify by stating aye. Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes unanimously on a voice vote. Article thirteen. Is there a motion under Article thirteen?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the Community Preservation Historical Preservation Reserve Fund, or any other monies available in the Community Preservation Fund, the sum of four hundred thousand for a grant to South Shore Community Action Council to restore the exterior siding and trim work at the East Wareham School, located at twenty-seven Depot Street, Wareham, Mass., and to require historic preservation restriction on that building.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded on Article thirteen. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on Article thirteen? Yes, Mr. Lester.
Patrick Lester, Precinct One, Chair of Community Preservation. I'd like to recommend that the body vote to hear from a person for this grant who is not a town member.
So you're requesting the privilege of the floor for someone to speak on this article that's not a town meeting Wareham voter?
Yes.
If I'm hearing no objection, I will allow that person to speak. They need to identify themselves as well.
Thank you, Lisa Spencer, CEO at South Shore Community Action Council. Thank you, members of the Community Preservation Committee, the Select Board, and the Finance Committee. We greatly appreciate the unanimous support in favor of this project. I'm from South Shore Community Action Council, and we serve thirty-eight towns throughout the South Shore, and also provide fuel assistance for the Cape Cod and Islands. We provide over one and a half million dollars annually to residents of Wareham through fuel assistance, weatherization, the Head Start Program, the Volunteer Income Tax Program that we offer at our offices in Plymouth. So we're very familiar with town residents and the support that you've provided to the Head Start Program currently on onset Ave. has been great, and we certainly look forward to a very longstanding and fruitful relationship as we go forward in the new building. We've had great support as we had a lengthy purchase process for the building, and had great cooperation from the town manager and council as we worked through getting federal funding for the purchase. So we're hoping that you'll support this. The siding is looking spectacular, and there's more to come on the inside. We're very committed to preserving as much as we can of the building on the inside, as well as the outside, and thank you, I hope, for your support.
Yes, sir, gentleman at the microphone.
Hello, Jim Manese, Precinct Four. I wanted to say I'm in favor of the proposal. I just want to know if we'll be getting a historic preservation restriction on the property, as it is, I believe, on the historic preservation. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on the motion on Article thirteen? Seeing no one else standing, we will go to a vote on Article, the motion under Article thirteen. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye. Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes unanimously on a voice vote. Article fifteen.
I move to appropriate from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve Fund, or any other available monies in the Community Preservation Fund, under the category of open space recreation, the sum of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the town by and through the Conservation Commission, to purchase a permit conservation restriction that complies with Mass. General Law, Chapter one eighty-four, Sections thirty-one through thirty-three, on two hundred and fifteen-plus acres in Wareham, associated with the, associated with the Wee- Wee- Weemeter River Corridor Conservation Project, and to authorize the Conservation Commission and our Select Board to sign any and all agreements and instruments as may be necessary to expedite to complete said purchase.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on Article fifteen. Is anything, oh, I'm sorry, may I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The FinCom recommend six one zero.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action four zero zero.
Thank you. Mr. Lester.
Again, Patrick Lester, Precinct One. Again, we have a speaker for this article who is an out-of-town resident, representing the Buzzards Bay Coalition. I'd like the body to give him permission to speak as a non-resident.
Unless I hear any objection, we'll give the privilege of the floor to the representative from the Buzzards Bay Coalition.
Thank you, Patrick. Good evening, everybody. My name is Brendan, and I'm Vice President of Watershed Protection with Buzzards Bay Coalition. This project, which is outlined in red, that's the two hundred and fifteen acres of land in northwest Wareham, it's immediately along the east side of the Weebyantic River, extending up from Route twenty-eight all the way to the border with Carver. It's associated with a larger project that includes protecting five hundred-plus acres of land in Carver simultaneously. Buzzards Bay Coalition has an agreement to acquire this property from the landowner, which is a cranberry grower, and the, the proposal here is for this land to be protected as permanently protected open space, to protect water quality, the fish and wildlife habitat associated with the river, and to be publicly accessible to all, with trails to enjoy the outdoors. The project is nearly six-million-dollar project to acquire the property. It's largely being paid for with state and federal grants, as well as some private fundraising by Buzzards Bay Coalition. About three-point-two million dollars has been committed to the project to date. It has an anticipated closing date in late spring next summer. The three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in open space funds from Community Preservation are proposed to be used for the Wareham, Town of Wareham Conservation Commission to acquire and hold a conservation restriction on the portion of the property in Wareham.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article, Article fifteen? Yes, ma'am.
Brenda Exstrom, Precinct Two. Will the cranberry bogs be, still be used to grow cranberries, or will they be put out to pasture or whatever?
Is, just to answer the question, you have the floor. Go ahead.
The majority of the cranberry bogs will be restored. Some of the cranberry bogs that are most productive and set back from the river, and most sensitive to the environment, will continue to be operated through a management agreement with a cranberry grower.
Madam Moderator, if I may also, so, I just want to get this clear. So the Buzzards Bay Coalition is purchasing or spending six million dollars plus to buy property that they're going to allow a cranberry grower to still use to do their cranberries to, what, to say that they're going to do their cranberries on? Is that, is that what it is?
If someone can, uh...
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'd like to ask...
No, no, I appreciate the question. Is someone, is someone able to answer that question for Mrs. Exstrom?
We're buying the land from a cranberry grower. That cranberry grower is, is retiring from the cranberry industry.
Okay.
The majority of the property, the property, the majority of the property is upland, with some wetlands, and about a hundred and fifty acres of cranberry bogs. Twenty-five to forty acres of cranberry bogs are expected to continue to be operated under a management agreement with a different cranberry grower.
Okay, that makes a lot more sense. Thank you very much, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Mrs. Exstrom. Mr. Slaven.
Good evening again. I'll probably be in the garage after this one. The explanation earlier was that half of the area would be back in production for cranberry bogs. As everybody knows, I hope, Wareham is under a very strict TMDL requirement that's going to be coming very quickly. It's going to cost all of us a huge amount of money to comply. I have no issue with this particular project, except that they're actually going to go ahead and continue to produce cranberries. You know, I think the explanation originally was half of the property. That doesn't, for me, I have concerns of what's going into rivers and what's coming out into Buzzards Bay that we'll be responsible for. Thank you.
Just one quick point. Mr. Slaven, you might want to translate for the rest of us your acronym there, TMDL.
It's basically, everybody, say, north of us, say, Carver.
Well, no, no, what do the letters stand for?
It stands for the, basically, the nitrates, et cetera, that go into Buzzards Bay, which is over what the DEP is going to allow. And basically, after a ten-year study, the U of Mass. has come out with numbers, and the state is going to enforce us to comply with these numbers.
All right, that, thank you. Mrs. Slaven.
Thank you. Sandy Slaven, Precinct Three. The vast majority of those existing cranberry bogs will be taken out of service and be allowed to become natural. The few bogs that will be in service, there will be action taken to reduce the amount of nitrogen coming off of it. I strongly recommend that we support the purchase of this land and save, save the land for our use for recreation. Thank you.
Is there anything else further to be said on the motion under Article fifteen? Yes, Mrs. Exstrom, I think you've used up some of your time, but go ahead.
I just want to say TMDL is total maximum daily loading. It's how much nitrogen can be put into the river or the waterways.
Thank you, that's what I was looking for before. Is there anything further to be said on Article fifteen? Seeing no one outstanding, we'll go to a vote on Article fifteen. This requires a two-thirds vote. It is an acquisition of interest in real estate, so all those in favor of the motion under Article fifteen, if we could have the motion back up there again, that would be great. Thank, thank you. All those in favor of the motion under Article fifteen, please signify by stating aye. Any opposed, please signify by stating nay.
No, nay.
I'm declaring that it passes by a two-thirds voice vote. Article fourteen. Is there a motion under Article fourteen?
I move that the town vote to transfer from the Community Preservation Undesignated Funds, or any other monies available in the Community Preservation Act Fund, under the category of historical preservation, and the sum of eighty thousand dollars for, excuse me, for a grant to the Town of Wareham's Town Administrator to contract for the engineering consultants, consultation services to evaluate and report on the condition of the exterior masonry wall, and evaluate the conditions of all the windows at the Wareham Town Hall, fifty-four Marion Road in Wareham.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on Article fourteen. May I have the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance recommended seven zero zero.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommend favorable action four zero zero.
Is there anything further to be said on the motion under Article fourteen?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Yes, this is just, I, I don't have a big presentation or anything like the others. Simply, we're looking at the exterior of the Wareham Town Hall in the brick, it's starting to crack. It's obviously something we don't want to let go, so we want to get a plan to look at that.
let go, so we want to get a plan to look at that. Also, look at some of the, we'll look at the windows, you know, and the shape that they're in. Right now, we're trying to use the storm windows, but with the age of the building, those are, those lock uptight more than anything, so they're usually stuck in one place or another, turn into mini guillotines. So, I grew up with those too, so that's why this finger doesn't bend so well. So, we, that's what we're looking to do with these funds. Get a, get a plan together and see what we're actually looking at and bring forth something that the body can look at. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mrs. Ekstrom.
Thank you. Wouldn't you just put out an RFP and ask people to come and look and give us a price of what it would be to fix these things and then pick the best one and bring that to the town meeting? I mean, I just think $80,000 for someone to come and look at it. Maybe I'm wrong. I mean, if historical preservation people would charge that much to look at a building? I know that if I want to put, fix something on my house, I'll have people come and they'll give me quotes. I don't have to pay them for those.
Yeah, so there's a good question. If you start going into the procurement guidelines, are we going over 200,000? Is it 500,000? Is it a million-dollar project for what you need engineering for, or you need a clerk of the works to even get there? So unfortunately, it's not like your, not like your home. We have to do things a little differently. My expectation is that each one of those windows could be in excess of 10 to $15,000. You know, we have, geez, what do we have, Dave? About forty of those or something? So, while you'll get some quotes, we're not going to get the real deal on what it's actually going to cost. So, we're trying to bring something together.
Okay, thank you.
Is anything further to be said on the motion on Article fourteen, Town Hall exterior, exterior wall and window restoration? Seeing no one outstanding, we'll go to a vote on the, on the motion under Article fourteen. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye. Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. I think I heard a couple of nays. So, it passes by a majority voice vote. Article two. Is there a motion on Article two?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of $950,000 from certified free cash as presented in the Finance Committee report.
Second.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends favorable action seven zero zero.
And if I might just take a little privilege to ask, on the, the report, the Finance Committee report is what the voters have in front of them this, this evening. Is that true?
That's correct. It's got a list of the exact expenditures or transfers.
And the report and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action four zero zero.
Is anything further to be said under the motion on Article two?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. If you go to page fifteen in your report, starts the appendix, and then you will switch to the one more page over, you'll see it's titled Non-Capital Free Cash Use. And then we'll just go down the list. So, the first one's a stabilization fund. We're seeking to put 150,000 into that to bring it up to a little over, almost 5.3 million. That's been, that's one of the reasons we have a double A-plus bond rating. I know when, about twelve, twelve-plus years ago, when came on board, our stabilization fund was in the, the hundreds of thousands. So, it's been, it's been a hard effort working together, you, the body voting, Finance Committee working with us and the Select Board, so, and obviously, the Wareham financial staff doing a great job. So, we appreciate all the efforts on that. OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits. That would be like retiree health care. So, that's a non-pension benefits. And we are in the Plymouth County OPEB Trust Fund. We're seeking to put $300,000 in there. So, we've been in there for approximately seven years. Our one-year return is 26.28%, because you can actually invest these in equities. And the five-year, which is, you know, from investments is more important, the longer duration return, has been 9.43%. You want to try and get your OPEB liability down. It's basically, your liability is, I believe the term's about 25 years. In the future, if you took all your OPEB costs from today through the liability for the next 25 years, that's what your OPEB liability is. Ours is about 113 million. We've just started bringing it down with this. So, this is very, this is again, the things that bond agencies and, you know, the, the DOR recommends you do. Collective Bargaining Reserve, we're requesting to put 100,000 into that fund. That is, right now, I've got eight unions that are up for negotiations. You try and make sure that you build it into the budget, but you can never tell when the collective bargaining agreements will go to town meeting. You try and get it done before they expire. Benefits Reserve, you have employees retire mid-year. It used to be when they retired that you, they get certain benefits paid out, like some of the vacation time. So, you used to just not hire for maybe a month, six weeks or something. We, we can't operate like that. When you lose especially a department head, you need to have that position, if not filled ahead of time, right when that position becomes vacant. The Unemployment Reserve, we used to budget unemployment, but has it fluctuate so greatly? It doesn't, this is especially around 2014, I think. It didn't make sense to put it in the budget if you never really knew what you were going to be hit with. We're not seeking to put any extra funds. The 540,000 looks to be a good cushion. For example, last year, I believe, we expended 113,000 in unemployment costs. Code Enforcement Derelict Properties, $200,000. You know, these are not, this isn't because your neighbor's lawn is over six inches. This is the homes and properties that are impacting their neighbors and blighting the neighborhoods. And we're trying to go after those properties and get the ultimate goals for it to be cleaned up. And Grant Funding, oftentimes, grants come along and you need a matching portion, so we're seeking to put 100,000 aside for that. And we have town meeting usually twice a year, and you don't know when you get the grants. You try and make sure that you have the funds ahead of time. So, this helps us on some of the smaller ones. Obviously, if it were extremely large grant with a matching portion, this wouldn't cover that, but this is good for some of the smaller ones. So, all told, it'll be 950,000. So, if this passes, plus all the capital items, our remaining balance in free cash would be $4,998,642.
Okay. Is there anything further to be said under the motion on Article two? Seeing no one standing, we'll go to a vote on the motion under Article two. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye. Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes unanimously on a voice vote. Article ten. Is there a motion on Article ten?
Madam Moderator, I move to approve as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on Article ten. Is there anything further to be said on Article ten?
Just read the explanation that's actually in, in the handbook. Recently, legislation known as the HERO Act, an act honoring, empowering, and recognizing our service members and veterans, has become law as part of Chapter 178 of the Acts of 2024. This act has added a new property exemption clause, 22i, to General Laws, Chapter, Section Five. Clause 22, 22i, if accepted, will increase the amount of real estate tax exempt, exemptions granted to veterans.
I think that's the other article.
Which one are we?
Same principle. Article ten is the senior exemption, local option.
Kind of the same thing, except for seniors, but.
It's similar, but if you could give, if you could give the explanation.
All right. I got a little ahead of myself there, folks. But yes, the expansion of the eligibility factors regarding income and assets will allow more of our seniors to qualify for this exemption. The increase of the exemption amount from 500 to 750 dollars will help combat any rise in taxes. In a time of increasing financial insecurity for many of our senior residents, this is a way to help support our senior resident base. Total cost to town for the exemptions in Articles nine and ten is approximately $30,000 per year.
Is there anything further to be said under the motion on Article ten, Senior Exemption Local Option Clause 41c? Yes, Mrs. Ekstrom.
Thank you. I am, I'm very much in favor of this one. He ended up Article nine, which the Town Administrator started to read. However, I would like to ask the Board of Selectmen and the assessor if they would kindly consider splitting the tax rate or at least putting out what the numbers would be for splitting the tax rate. We have heard for at least 25 years, possibly longer, that we can't split the tax rate until it's an 80-20 split. But I have been watching the taxes over the last several years, and I have brought it up to people. And what happens is, they haven't been increasing the valuations of commercial properties at the same rate that they've been increasing the valuations.
Point of order, Madam Moderator. Point of order.
The residential properties, it most certainly is. The residential properties. So, what's happening is that even if you give them an exemption.
So, I think I, excuse me, Mrs. Ekstrom, I'm sorry. My fault. I was a little distracted here. So, there was a point of order, I believe, raised. I'm assuming this is on whether your comment is under the scope of the article. And it is not, though I would say that the Select Board is the entity that holds hearings on whether to split the tax rate. But it's not, it's not under the scope of the article having to do with a senior exemption.
Well, it is, if we're, if we're, if we are putting, we're going to increase it by 50%, but over four or five years, the evaluation goes up 50%, then it's a wash. And that's what's happening. So, I would like the Select Board and the Board of Assessors, who are our elected representatives, to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said under the motion on Article ten? Seeing no one outstanding, we'll go to a vote under the motion on Article ten, Senior Exemption Local Option Clause 41c. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes unanimously by a voice vote. Article one. Is there a motion under Article one?
I move that the town transfer the sum of $2,288,000 from fiscal year 25 Certified Free Cash to fund the Fiscal Year 25 Capital Plan and as is printed in the Finance Committee report.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on Article one. Is there anything further to be said under Article one?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. If you turn to, again, page fifteen and then one over, you'll see the chart says capital items at the top of it. The first one is the EMS ambulance, new additional cost. We had, at a prior town meeting, appropriated 375,000 for the ambulance. We got the final costs on that, and they are telling us the lead time is 36 months, so three years, to get that in. And they are projecting that the cost will rise during that 36 months by approximately $52,192. So, what I'm requesting is that we set aside 75,000 just in case. The last ambulance that we ordered, I think the chassis just came in, it's been about three years since we ordered that one as well. And we were on a cycle to replace it every three years, so it's pushing us back. So, it's, what I'm requesting is that we set these monies aside, so we have it ordered and have the money. It's not going to them until we receive it, obviously, and we're still earning interest on these funds. The next one is an EMS, so that's ambulance services again. The supervisor vehicle to purchase and equip, that is a response vehicle. This would look to be like a, I'd say Tahoe-style. The reason for that is you can put equipment in there for responding. The current vehicle that the supervisor uses would then go to be the vehicle that they use for the plowing, doing things in the lot and such. And then the one, the vehicle that they've been using it for that hasn't passed inspection for the last couple of years, actually, we can finally put that to bed. IT replacement of computers, peripherals, firewall and switches, that's just the continuation of updating our IT systems. The next one's three school buses to purchase and equip. We own our own school bus fleet. We still have a lot of 2007 school buses. We have, we were pirating parts off of old buses and trying to use them that way. It's, we need to keep on. We should be buying between three and four of these buses at least every year, and that's not including the smaller ones. So, this would be, I believe, two large and one special education with, with a lift on it. The next one's for the school department as well. It's a F-550 or equivalent. That's a truck with plow and sander package. So, the Fields and Grounds Team from the school do, do the, they use those vehicles, obviously, and do sanding, plowing for their lots for Viking Drive. It is a help for us, so we don't have to worry about them. We can concentrate on the streets, and then, once those are cleared, the schools are, the schools are ready to take the buses in. So, it's, it's a little bit more efficient. Doesn't make the kids as happy, but it, you know, it gets them open. So, Town Hall Auditorium Rehab and Acoustics. We fixed the, the slate roof in the town hall that was sliding and destroying the rubber roof. We then fixed the rubber roof, so there's no more leaks in the auditorium. Fixed auditorium roof. Then we've put the new lighting in there. We now have HVAC system in there, so there's actually heating and cooling. So, this is sort of the last phase to get this to be a really good working auditorium. That's including painting, fixing some of the woodwork that was damaged from the leaking. The biggest complaint that we get is the acoustics in there, especially WCTV for them painting. So, we're trying to look at the different plans for the acoustics. The next one is for the multi, multi, excuse me, Municipal Maintenance Department, Multi Service Center. That's a generator upgrade and installation. The current generator does not work for the whole building and does not, does not function for the elevator in there. So, we'd like to rectify that situation. Next one is a core cut saw. Core cut saws are what you use on asphalt. We've been doing, with some of the projects Municipal Maintenance has been doing, which is saving us a lot of money. They need the core cut saw to go, to do large lengths. A hand-cut one's going to give you the jagged edge. We've been begging and borrowing, not quite stealing, to utilize other places, and that time's come to an end. So, we need to get our own, and it does help us out overall with our efficiencies. The surf rake is what we use to clean the beaches. I think this has been one of the best years that we've had for it in a long time. The lifespan on those is a lot shorter, so we're seeking to have a new one as the other one's starting to go south. Whacker sidewalk machine is in, is the, gosh, I think it's, is there articulating machine? It's smaller. You can use it on the sidewalk, whether for plowing, but it's also good for some of our, going through some of our tighter spaces. It's a really good machine that helps out the Municipal Maintenance Department. And that is to purchase and equip all of those. There's one more, 3,500 utility truck with plow. thirty-five-hundred utility truck with plow, purchase and equip for the Municipal Maintenance Department. This is one of the backbones of our everyday fleet. That would be retiring an older, an older vehicle that's rusting out. Wareham Police Department, this is for vehicles to purchase and equip. And it's, the police department, as you know, having, having good vehicles for them is extremely important. And Madam Moderator, I didn't want to do this beforehand, but it was, I just want to say that I want, the chief sent me a letter not too long ago, letting me know that there was going to be a life-saving medal award from Massachusetts Police Association. And I want to talk to you about some of our, you know, some of our officers. And Chief, if you, yourself and XO John Gerard don't mind standing up. XO John Gerard, back in June twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, not well on duty, while driving a vehicle, another vehicle passed by him, nearly striking him, then struck an embankment. After that occurred, the vehicle caught on fire. And XO Gerard, on his own, went in and I would say, and absolutely saved the individual from the fiery vehicle. This is what our officers do on their off-duty. So you can imagine what they do on duty. And I haven't had the opportunity to officially with the Board of Selectmen yet. Thank you. But I just wanted to thank you, Lieutenant. And thank you, Chief, for bringing that forward. And that was an award from other officers. So that tells you how important it was. And thank you, Chief, for putting that forward. The next article, next one for the Wareham Police Department, that's one of the Bornhill Tower Radio Power System Shelter. The shelter, the old one there has gone completely by the wayside, was housing more of the, more rodents than it was our equipment. And they were chewing through everything. So we've worked together with some of the other departments, have a new shelter installed, and this would cover some of the equipment and the wiring for it. So that's fifty thousand dollars. DNR Parking Events Vehicle Trailer Purchase and Equipment. This is for the Division of Natural Resources. When we've got these events in the parking, in some of the parking program, the vehicle that we currently have is going by the wayside. But also, these major events, it's almost like each and every time we're doing something, something a little different. This allows us to set up that traffic trailer, have it ready. And we should have a system down for whenever we're doing these. We know pretty much the areas it's going to be for almost all of them. It's either Wright and Onset Proper, if you will, and Main Street for the, for the Oyster Festival and some of the others. This allows us to be a lot more efficient and have the system set up. And then the DNR, the onset facilities rehab, so that's for the pier buildings and bathrooms on the bluffs. We're trying to do the, the outside of them. And the bathrooms on the bluffs really need some rehab on the, on the interior for those bathrooms. They're in pretty rough shape. So all told, this is two million two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on this Article one Approve and Fund FY twenty-five Capital Plan? Seeing no one outstanding, we'll go to a vote on Article one. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye. Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. Passes unanimously on a voice vote. Article seven.
Article seven, I move to approve as printed, Article seven as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on Article seven. Is there anything further to be said on Article seven?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Moderator. Matt, are you able to put the, up on the screen? All right. Just trying to give you an idea of where it is on Minut Ave, what it looks like. The property itself, there's no real value. You can tell by the assess, there's a lot of wetlands on it. But it is, it runs along Minut Avenue. We are looking for that shared space path along Minut Ave, which, you know, we'd have to do some takings and such, and maybe put some drainage on that side. So it was kind of fortuitous. We received a call from the representative of the owner of the property saying that the owner wishes to donate it to the town of Wareham. So we think that, given what's going on with the future for the site, again, with the shared use path, it makes a lot of sense. So it's approximately three, three acres. If you can see the, to the upper, upper corner, that's where you can see where the parking lot for the elementary school is and where some of the new buildings are. So that gives you an idea of where it is on Minut Ave. So thank you for consideration.
Is there anything further to be said on Article seven except gift of land located at forty-six Minut Ave?
Madam Moderator, Finance Committee votes recommend.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me. Thank you. And the vote and recommendation of the Select Board?
Recommendation, favorable action four zero zero.
Is there anything further to be said on our, the motion under Article seven? So this being a acceptance of a gift of land to be on the conservative side, this will call for two-thirds vote. Are you coming down to speak? We're actually starting the vote.
I'm sorry. It took me a while to get.
I'm sorry. Fine, go ahead, go ahead.
No, that's okay.
Go ahead.
Nancy McHale, Precinct Five. I just wonder if an environmental assessment has been done on this property?
It is not.
Okay. And what was its previous use?
To answer the question.
Nothing. It's just been raw land, swamp land right there on the side of the road.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Is there anything further to be said under the motion on Article seven? So let me just repeat, since this is accepting gift of land, calls for two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye. Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes by a two-thirds voice, voice majority. I declare it so passed. Article nine.
Article nine, I move that the town vote to accept a General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause two hundred and twenty-one, to be effective for applicable exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded under Article nine. Could I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Seven zero zero.
Pardon me?
Seven zero zero.
To, in favor?
Yes.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action four zero zero.
Mr. Sullivan, is there anything further to be said on Article nine?
I get the feeling none of you want to hear my voice. We've already kind of gone over it.
Is any, anything further to be said on Article nine? Gentlemen in the back, are you coming down to speak? I want to give you time to get here.
No, no.
Oh, okay. Seeing no one outstanding, we'll go to a vote under the motion on Article nine HERO Act of two thousand and twenty-four. All in favor, please signify by stating aye. Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. Passes unanimously on a voice vote. Article eleven.
Madam Moderator, I move to accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter ninety, Section seventeen C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded under Article eleven. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends favorable action seven zero zero.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommend favorable action four zero zero.
Is there anything further to be said under Article eleven? Seeing no one standing to be recognized, we'll go to a vote on Article, the motion under Article eleven. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye. Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes by a voice vote majority. So that concludes all of the business. So I will, but before I do that, before I entertain a motion to dissolve the town meeting, I'd like to take the opportunity to, to thank the School Department, WCTV, my volunteer tellers who did not have to count anything today, but thanks, thank them for showing up. And I will now entertain a motion to dissolve the town meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to dissolve the town meeting. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.